Welcome, everybody, to the regular City Council meeting for Monday, December 7th, 2020. In accordance with L.B. 898, please be advised that there's a copy of the Openset Meetings Act, which is posted in the back of the room by the northwest door. So let us all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a brief period of silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That was a big bang.
It was. We are in session.
The order of business for the City Council is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda on their public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The applicant and those in favor should speak first, then those opposed. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating their name, address, whether they are speaking in favor or opposition to the item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. After all the public hearings, the council will vote on resolution and its items listed on our third reading. On the second and last Mondays of the month, immediately prior to the adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue not on the agenda for that date nor plan for a future agenda. Clerk, will you make some announcements?
Limited seating is available in the council chambers, where you may wait in the Bill Lexford Studio or the hallway until your item is called. Then you can enter the council chambers and come to the podium. After you have finished speaking, you can exit the chambers through the door to your immediate left. Also, for public hearing testimony for open mic, we are going to have Zoom availability for those individuals that would like to participate in that manner. I will have a notation on our action after today's council meeting, and you would need to contact the city clerk's office to register. If you have any questions, in the interim, you can give us a call at 402-441-7437, but we'll have the registration information available for you at that time.
We will also have available to come down here in person to speak at any time when we have our open-mic meetings, the following week, the 14th, and on the 21st. So there's other options for people to make their voice heard, and you can also send in emails, phone calls, and other ways to get ahold of the City Council. Okay, Madam Clerk, should we move on?
Our first item on our council agenda today for Monday, December 7th, would be our consent agenda, Sections 1 and 2.
Would anybody like to come forward to speak on Items 1 or 2? Any comments from City Council? Yes, Madam Washington.
Chairman McGinnis. Chairman McGinnis, I would just note that Item 1A on our consent agenda, the attachment is actually the attachment for an item further down on the list. It's the attachment for the conduit lease agreement, 7A, and what was attached to 7A is, in fact, what we are supposed to be looking at at 1A, the access control policies. So the information is there, it's just attached to the wrong item.
Do we need to change those numbers, or not?
I just think we need to note that the attachment for 1A, the correct attachment for 1A, is attached to Item 7A. And give, leave to us a moment.
Would anybody from the public like to come forward and speak on any items of 1A or Item 2? Okay, seeing none, move on.
We can vote on these items. Item 1A is approving a access control and identification and authentication policies for the City of Lincoln and Lancaster County Enterprise Network, introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second.
And moved and seconded by Councilperson Washington. Any comments, questions? Please call the roll.
Ward?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Item 1B is approving the distribution of funds representing interest earnings on short-term investments of idle funds during the month ended August 31st, 2020, introduced by Ward.
So moved.
Second?
And moved in second by Councilperson Raybold. Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Shob?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Item 1C is approving the distribution of funds representing interest earnings on short-term investment of idle funds during the month ended September 30th, 2020, introduced by Ward.
So moved.
Second.
And moved in second by Councilperson Christensen. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Item 1D is resolution levying the assessments approved by the City Council, sitting as Board of Equalization on November 23rd, 2020, and setting the interest rate on those assessments for the cost of the improvements in the Downtown Management Business Improvement District, Downtown Core Management Business Improvement District, Downtown Maintenance District, and the West Haymarket Downtown Maintenance District, introduced by Ward.
So moved.
Second.
And moved in second by Councilperson Washington. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Washington?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Items 2A and 2C, excuse me, Items 2A through 2C, introduced by Christensen.
So moved.
Second.
And moved in second by Councilperson Washington. Any comments, questions, thoughts? Okay, seeing none, please call the roll.
Shob?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. That ends our consent agenda. Section 4 is our public hearing liquor resolutions. Item 4A, application of FuCor Inc. Doing Business as Venue to expand its Class CK liquor license for an addition of an irregular-shaped area measuring approximately 198 feet by 160 feet, including an outdoor area measuring approximately 40 feet by 10 feet at 4111 Pioneer Woods Drive, Suites 104 and 107. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you really believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, I'm Tim O'Neal, I'm with O'Neal Heinrich, 800 Lincoln Square, 121 South, 13th Street, here on behalf of FuCor, which is Venue. And really, this is kind of a housekeeping and additional space issue. Basically, there's two existing licenses right now, we're consolidating, and then they're adding an additional premises to renting and then consolidating into one license for obvious purposes, for control and safety employees and all those sorts of issues. And this new premises is to expand the to-go business, as you can imagine, which is pretty popular. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Do we have any questions for Mr. O'Neal? Seeing none, thank you for coming down.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to come forward at this time to speak on Item 5A? No, 4A.
Mr. Chair, seeing none, I move approval of Item 4A.
Second?
And moved in second by Councilperson Raybold. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Section 5 is our public hearing resolutions. Item 5A is accepting and approving the report of new impending claims against the city for November 1st through November 15th, 2020.
Is there anybody that'd like to come forward on this item? Anybody coming in from back there? Okay. Any comments or questions from City Council members? Okay, seeing none, let's move on and vote on the resolutions.
Item 5A is accepting and approving the report of new impending claims against the city for November 1st through November 15th, 2020, introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second.
And moved in second by Councilperson Raybold. Do we have any questions or comments? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0.
Okay, that ends our public hearings. Move on to resolutions.
Item 6A is our resolutions, action only, appeals by Nancy Selzer of the Planning Commission's conditional approval of special permit 20013 to allow for community unit plan with associated favors to set back slot area, block length, and the sanitary zero design standards on property generally located at South 46th and Hillside Streets, introduced by Ward.
So moved.
Second.
And moved in second by Councilperson Christensen, Councilperson Washington.
Thank you very much. I would like to offer a motion to amend this item, 213. The amendment was placed before each of us this afternoon, and this is an agreement, this amendment documents an agreement that was come to by Mr. Euler, the applicant, and his adjacent neighbors on the north side of the project. It represents a lot of conversation and collaboration, and eventually, an agreement between the parties on the fencing and landscaping to reduce the impact of headlights on their homes from headlights sweeping through and entering their homes. I...
I'll second that.
And moved in second. We amend...
Motion to amend number 1.
Number 1.
Motion to amend.
Do we have any other comments or questions on this?
Now I would like to make a couple more comments.
Okay, go ahead.
I'd really want to...
Wait, there's more?
Yeah, I know. Really, how do you take months of conversation and negotiation and boil it down to 30 seconds, which I will do? I want to thank each of the neighbors who brought an issue forward. I want to thank Mr. Euler for listening patiently and working out this agreement. I want to thank his engineering firm, Riga Engineering, for finding the solution to retain the water appropriately, and it just took so many people talking with each other and negotiating this. I just want to thank each and every one of them, and for the neighbors who were not directly adjacent, but who also asked questions and made comments. I want to thank you all. I think this project is much better understood, and eventually, I think this project is going to be better carried out. So thank you.
Councilperson Raybold.
Well, I want to do all the thank yous. I also want to thank Watershed Management, working with Riga, Mr. Euler, and the neighbors. So thank you, Tim, Zach, for the work that you did on that. But really, all the credit should really go to Councilwoman Washington. I can tell you that she really reached out to the neighbors. I made visits to the neighborhood, too. It's really a lovely, lovely neighborhood, and I think, working with everyone, and thanks to Mr. Euler, he wants to make it and preserve as much of the natural beauty while making sure that people are not going to be overwhelmed by any additional water based on the roadway and the additional homes going in. So it really took a skilled mediator to bring all these parties together, and I want to just say thank you to Councilwoman Washington for the amount of time that she put in in gathering the parties together. And I think the good news is that Mr. Euler has been open and wanting to work with the neighbors, and as we go forward, we want to make sure that there is good communication, and we know that there was additional safeguards put in here, contingency and requirements that the developer must meet, and so we want to make sure that the neighbors have a full knowledge of what those requirements are, so everybody is in a better place and looks forward to this project happening in a positive fashion. So thank you, Councilwoman Washington.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on the motion to amend? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Washington?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0.
Okay, now the main motion. Does anybody have any questions or comments on the main motion, as amended?
As amended.
Okay, seeing none, please call the roll.
Shob?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0.
Okay.
And next section is Section 7, Public Hearing Ordinance's Second Reading and Related Resolutions. Item 7A is approving a conduit lease agreement for a 10-year term between the City of Lincoln and BlueStem Network LLC to occupy space in the city's Lincoln's Technology Improvement District conduit system.
Good morning, or afternoon, it's afternoon, yes, crazy year.
Hi, David.
David Young, Information Services, thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak about this. This is our 14th conduit lease since 2012. This is an exact template for what we charge for a small company. These are just where is as is in the conduit, meaning where there's space available, they can install their fiber, and it's on a per-linear foot charge. It allows smaller companies to come in and just lease specific segments, bridge crossings, things like that. This template is the exact same as the two other linear foot agreements that we have signed. For COVID purposes, we did ask BlueStem not to attend today, otherwise, they would have been here to attend. Can I go answer any questions you would like?
We have any questions for Mr. Young? One is, go ahead.
Timing on this?
Yes, that's what I was going to ask.
Tell us about timing.
So BlueStem received part of the CARES Act funding to build the community of Pleasantale and Emerald, and where they would receive the bandwidth is here in Lincoln, and then go straight out west out. The requirements are to actually have the network constructed by the end of December. So they, we have issued permits to begin the construction, but in order to get the agreement in place, we would like to do that, if that's possible, in as short a time as possible.
Any other questions for Mr. Young? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else from the public like to come forward on Item 8A?
7A.
7A. Got to keep wanting to move ahead. Yes, Councilman Shob.
Just a point of order, so this is an item, and we just had a public hearing, and you just asked if anybody in the public wanted to speak. Did I get that right? So we did have a public hearing on this item.
Yes.
Okay.
We've had a public hearing, and nobody has come to speak.
And this was advertised ahead of time, and everybody...
I personally haven't received any comment from any constituents, one way or the other, on this.
I have not either, and I would just note, for the record, that the attachment on 1A is the attachment really for 7A.
For 7A.
So I will move that we suspend the rules in order to vote on this now to facilitate the contract taking place in a timely fashion in coordination with other government entities.
Second.
Been moved in second by Councilperson Raybold, that we suspend the rules and vote on this item. Yes, Councilperson Shob.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is good for business, good for our community, good for everyone. We're doing this in the public good.
Very much so. Seeing no other comments, let's vote on to suspend the rules.
Ward?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Christianson?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0.
Yeah, I wasn't sure about that one either.
You voted twice. Can't vote twice.
Okay, do we have a motion?
We just suspended the rules, now we have, we need a new motion, right?
Yes, need a motion to...
So moved.
And moved by Councilperson Ward, that we approve this item, correct?
I seconded it.
Okay, been seconded by Councilperson Christensen.
This is a good thing.
This is where I should have said that, yeah.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0.
Okay, that ends our public hearing. Move on to 8.
Item 8A, creating the alley paving district number 365 for the north-south alley between 9th Street and 10th Street from Park Avenue to South Street.
Councilperson Ward.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I would move that we remove this item as we tabled from our previous meeting.
Second?
And moved in second by Councilperson Raybold, that we remove this from the table.
We've taken it up from the table now.
Why did we table it?
And since it was already moved and seconded last meeting, we can just discuss it and vote on it.
Okay, let's move on, removing from the table.
Ward?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0.
Okay, the motion's already been introduced and seconded. Do we have any other discussions on this item? Yes, Councilperson...
Would someone remind me why we tabled this?
There was discussion about removing certain individuals from this paving district at that time. Since then, Councilperson Washington...
And how people charged, and am I required to pay if I don't want to be a part of the district type thing? Thank you, thank you.
That doesn't come to us to a later date, the actual assessment.
Right.
And at that time, at a later date, when they're ready to do that, we can do what we want to at that time.
Right, and since it's quite some time, it doesn't make sense to deal with who's in the jurisdiction in the district right now. We've got a couple years.
They may have moved by the time this comes forward, and it may be a different owner. Okay, let's go ahead and vote on creating the paving district.
Washington?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Item 9A, or Section 9, Ordinance's Third Reading and Related Resolutions. Item 9A is adopting Lincoln Electric System Rate Standards to become effective January 1st, 2021, introduced by Christensen.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second by Councilperson Ward. Do we have any questions or comments on this? Seeing none, please call the roll.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Item 9B is adopting the Lincoln Electric System Annual Budget for 2021 to become effective January 1st, 2021, introduced by Christensen.
So moved.
Second.
And moved in second by Councilperson Raybold. Any comments?
Is this the one that's supposed to delay?
No, no, we can do them all if we want to. Okay, seeing none, please call the roll.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Item 9C is authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $300 million in Lincoln Electric Systems revenue and refunding bonds, introduced by Christensen.
So moved.
Second.
And moved in second by Councilperson Raybold. Any comments or questions? Just the measly 300 million. Pocket change. Okay, seeing none, please call the roll.
Raybold?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Item 9D is amending Chapter 2.56 of the Lincoln Municipal Code relating to restrictions on participation in lotteries by amending Sections 2.56.010, 2.56.020, 2.56.030, and to add definitions to define key terms, and to allow agents or employees of a satellite location or sales outlet to play the lottery when not on duty, and repealing Sections 2.56.010, 2.56.020, and 2.56.030 of the Lincoln Municipal Code as herein to existing, introduced by Raybold.
So moved.
Second.
And moved in second, yes, Councilperson Washington.
Now that it has been moved and seconded, I'd like to table this for one week. Councilman Bowers is working on an amendment to this, and he also would like to be present to participate in the vote. He'd ask for one week.
Second.
And moved in second that we table this for one, and Councilperson...
Yes, I will recuse myself from this vote.
Okay, thank you. Been moved in second that we put this on the table. Question?
Yes, we've tabled two things, two medians in a row. We used to just delay, all right? Is that the same?
See, we can do it either way, but hey, we're having fun.
Okay.
It just adds another vote. We need to be maker of mine.
Yeah, that helps a lot, thank you. We've discovered a new rule.
Any other questions, comments about tabling this until next week? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Washington?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried 5-0.
I get her.
Sonny?
Yes, ma'am.
Who seconded this?
Shob.
Thank you.
Or the tabling?
No, the original.
I seconded it, I think. Didn't I second it?